This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Taos County Board of County Commissioners at 9:01 a.m. on Tuesday, September 19th, 2023. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Good morning.
Commissioner Romero?
Present.
Commissioner Vehil?
Present.
Commissioner Mascherena?
Here.
Vice Chair Romero?
Present.
Chair Brash?
Present. Thank you very much. For item three on our agenda, I would just like us to take a moment and reflect on feel gratitude for the fact that the Elvaya fire that started on September 8th was contained relatively quickly and that we stayed much safer than we have with some of our fires in the past. So just want to send out the thanks to all of the first responders who were part of it, our firefighters, volunteer and otherwise, our sheriff's office from our county and neighboring counties, our management team who I know was up there helping out. So just reflect on the fact that we got out of this one pretty safely. And thank you also to Mother Nature for providing the rain that helped so much. So thank you, everybody. Item four is our pledge and five salute to the flag of New Mexico. So if folks would please stand with me. And Commissioner Vehil, would you like to lead us in the pledge this morning?
Thank you.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And the salute to the flag?
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeos symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you, everybody. This takes us to item six, which is approval of the agenda. Commissioners, what are your wishes? Motion to approve? Thank you, Commissioner Vehil. Is there a second? Thank you, Miguel. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherena?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brash?
Yes. Our agenda for this morning is approved as presented. Item seven is one of our favorite parts of the agenda because it's so important to the work that Taos County does, and that is the awards and recognition segment. And for this, I'll turn it over to County Manager Brent Houdamia.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you all for being here today. I think today's a little moment of gratitude as we think about all the blessings that we do have. And I also want to first begin by thanking Elsa Vehil for serving in the interim role of Finance Director. And as we all know, she was doing chief, her duties as Chief Procurement Officer for Taos County. So she was stretched thin.
Elsa, we really appreciate you going above and beyond for so many months.
And it's also my pleasure to introduce Emily Rolson Elliott, the new Finance Director for Taos County. As you all know, Emily started on September 6th, and she's quickly getting up to speed on local government. She has an accounting background but never in government. And so we look forward to working with Emily and we're grateful that she took this position with us. She had another opportunity and she chose us over her other opportunity. So I'm grateful for that. And you want to say a few words, Emily?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners and fellow Taos County colleagues. I just wanted to express my gratitude to our county managers for extending this position to me. It's a real honor to serve in this capacity, and I look forward to the future and the work that we're going to do together. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Emily. We are thrilled that you're here and part of the team. So just thank you and good luck with everything you do. It's a critical function, as we all know. So thank you. Thank you. Okay, 7B.
Roberto Zaragosa, please come forward. Cassidy Wilson, please come forward. And I'm going to turn it over in a moment to Roberto. But back in, I believe it was April, we hired Cassidy Wilson. And part of, it's April, right? So we hired April, I mean, back in April, we hired Cassidy. And then she attended the Mexico Law Enforcement DPS Telecommuter Academy. And lo and behold, Cassidy finished as valedictorian of the class. And we're very proud of that. To our knowledge, she is the only one from Taos Central Dispatch that has ever been the valedictorian. Unless former Sheriff Romero knows anything different, to our knowledge, Cassidy's the first valedictorian. And with that, Roberto, a few words?
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Roberto Zaragosa, 911 Director. Thank you for allowing me to say a few words today. It's always my favorite appearance when I get to stand up here and brag on my staff because I have, like I've told you before, the greatest staff. With that said, Cassidy Wilson, one of our recent communications trainees, came on board and to her credit, with little to no public safety experience. So she hit the ground running from ground zero. So she, you know, I don't have to say it to tell you guys how complicated that job is and difficult with all the different nuances of what has to be done policy-wise and with 911 calls and such. But she took it on head-on. She came in. One of the things I loved about Cassidy, from day one, she came in and she was taking her notes to learn the job. She was open-minded to her fellow telecommunicators trying to learn. She's not from the area, just like I am. And she was, I saw her working with maps and trying to learn her geography as best she could. So as a director, it's kind of one of those tricky situations sometimes to decide when you send a telecommunicator to this academy. Because you send them a little bit too early, it could be a little bit of an overload. But from what I saw from her, it was obvious that she was going to do well. So with that said, like I said, it was quite an honor and a privilege to be there at the New Mexico Law Enforcement Academy. She was there with agencies of all different sizes and whatnot. And she went in there head-on. And it was kind of one of those goosebump kind of moments when you hear, you know, her speech, I'm Cassidy Wilson, representing Taos County, and I'm the valedictorian of this class. So I think it deserves to be appreciated and celebrated. So thank you.
And I did tell Cassidy last week that she can give her speech here. She said, no, it was meant for her class. And before I present this certificate, that day the fire broke, the Elvaya fire broke out, I did happen to go into dispatch. And all, Roberto jumped on the station. So we had four working that day with Roberto's help and Eliza's help. And besides the fire calls, they were getting a lot of other calls as well. And it's good teamwork. And all of them were patient. There were some excited folks on that other end. They were calling about the fire. And every one of them had some patience. It was good to see. And Cassidy was working that day. So the certificate of achievement presented to Cassidy Wilson in recognition of your outstanding scholastic achievement and being named valedictorian while attending the New Mexico Law Enforcement Department of Public Safety Telecommuter Academy plus September 2023, signed engine at Brash Commission Chair and Brent Houdamia County Manager. Thank you, Cassidy.
Thank you.
Before we take a picture with you, I just wanted to say thank you. This is impressive. Roberto, you know, you and your team, including your valedictorian here, all of our emergencies rest in your hands, right? Whether that is a wildfire or an accident or a heart attack, all of our emergencies are with you guys. So to know that you have such a skilled team and to know how quickly Cassidy has gotten up to speed in a complicated job, in a complicated geographic area, I mean, I think we'll all sleep a little bit better tonight because of you guys. So thank you. Take your time. Unless anyone else, any other comments?
Other than way to start, huh?
Yeah, way to start. Miguel? I know you know this.
I want to congratulate you and thank you for coming aboard. In 1989, I did have to go through this academy. It's not the funnest thing, but it's stressful. And coming out valedictorian, I congratulate you again.
Sities?
Thank you, everybody. Before we move away from our awards and recognitions, I just want to take a moment to also recognize our former governor, Bill Richardson, who, as we probably all realize, passed away recently and services were last week. He was a real friend to northern New Mexico. And I know we were talking before he showed up in Taos County, in Pinasco, in Cuesta. So we're grateful for his service and will not forget him. Moving on to another very important part of our agenda is item eight, public comment. And the way we work this, some of you are old pros and some of you might be new to the process. We will first listen to the folks in the room. And as you approach the podium, please make sure that the green light is on the microphone. Say your name and your neighborhood, where you live. And you have three minutes to talk about whatever you want. We cannot engage with you. We can't go back and forth because of the State Open Meetings Act. Anything that is as fascinating as what you're bringing forward has to be published on our agenda 72 hours in advance. So we will listen, we will take notes, we'll follow up as needed, but we can't answer your questions this morning. So first, we'll take someone, anyone in the room. And after that, if you're watching online, take note of the number, 575-737-6310. When we're ready for our phone calls, I'll take the phone off of Do Not Disturb, and we'll let folks who are watching online share their comments. So if anybody would like to come forward, Steve, good morning. Let me get my clock ready.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, it's wonderful to be here with you. And I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk just a little bit about an event that we have coming up on Sunday. It's our Recovery Day celebration. As many of you know, September is National Recovery Month. And so annually, we celebrate that this year in Kit Carson Park. And this will be from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We will have food and music and speakers, but especially wanted to highlight that we'll be honoring recovery heroes in our community. Anna Martinez, who was instrumental in getting the detox center open back 25 years ago. And now we have the privilege in helping to get that reopened. And with our partnership with the county, we're certainly looking forward to being able to once again help our friends and family in our community to recover from the disease of substance use disorder and alcoholism. And as we probably know, this is an epidemic in our community. And we're looking for, this is the first step in establishing a continuum of care, which will help all of the citizens of our community. We'll be celebrating recovery together, as this is a family disease. And we know that our friends and family have been affected. So thank you once again for allowing me an opportunity to let you know about this. And we hope that you'll all come out to Kit Carson Park on Sunday and celebrate recovery with us. Thank you. What did I forget?
Did you introduce yourself?
I'm Steve Fulendorf, and I'm the Community Coordinator for Rio Grande Alcohol Treatment Program as well as recovery-friendly Taos. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here in the room who would like to make comments? Okay, first here and then here.
Good morning. Hi, good morning. My name is Loriann Rangel. I'm a resident of El Prado and born and raised here. So good morning, Commissioners, madam. Just want to let everybody know, I am born and raised here in Arroyo Seco, graduated from Taos High. I have a BA in Hospitality Tourism and MSU, Go Aggies. Currently, I'm a Tauski Valley. And I focus solely on, mainly on recruitment for the entire resort. That said, I wanted to share with you our local hiring efforts that we have here in Taos and in the state of New Mexico. Hiring local is not just a strategy for me, it's a commitment to the community we all call home here in northern New Mexico. At Tauski Valley, Inc., we understand the significance of providing employment opportunities to our neighbors. We prioritize hiring locally for many reasons, but mainly because it empowers our own people to thrive and grow within our organization. It helps to strengthen the bonds that tie us together as a community. In our ongoing efforts to prioritize hiring locally and engaging in the community, I'm pleased to share some of my initiatives that I've undertaken. I visit local job fairs here at Taos High and Taos Academy in the fall and the spring. I attend and work very closely with workforce connections and attend job fairs twice this month. And I also do a special information event at our local office here in Taos. I attend job fairs at U&amp;M, U&amp;M Taos, NMSU, NMHU, Santa Fe Community College, and CNM, showing up to recruit at local events like the fiestas and movies on the greens. I'm an executive committee member, board member, and founding member of the Northern New Mexico Coalition for Work-Based Learning that was founded in 2020 by Lanal to improve the practice of work-based learning in our region through better coordination among practitioners, great awareness of the continuum of work-based learning experiences, and improved capacity among districts, schools, and community partners like Tauski Valley Incorporated to implement high-quality work-based learning experiences. And I also run and maintain internship programs for high school and college students. Finally, I want to leave you with some stats. And these are from November 2022. Seventy-one percent are local to Taos County. That's our staff. Nine percent are within New Mexico outside of Taos County. And 20% come from outside the areas of New Mexico. One of our core values as a B Corp and a company is to pay a living wage. In keeping to that commitment to pay a fair and equitable living wage to our staff, we monitor and adjust wages every year. Our starting wage was raised last year to 1710 per hour. And the minimum wage, the minimum wage here in Taos County is 12. Even though it dropped a bit this year, we're committed to start at 1710. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, anybody else in the room? Yeah, please come on up.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Hillary Hart. I've lived on EJ Pacheco Road in Arroyo Seco in the low end of El Salto for about 11 years now. I love where I live. I work the Asequias. I know my neighbors and I care about them. We're having increased traffic on El Salto Road, and I'd like to present a few reasons for that and ask you to look at the situation and come up with some solutions. The first reason is increased building. We have a lot of new residents on El Salto Road. That means residential traffic, but incredibly amount of increase in builder traffic. Randalls, plumbers, electricians coming up and down the road quickly. The speed limit is 20 miles an hour. There is no law enforcement. There's no presence of any kind of law enforcement there to assess whether people are speeding, which they are. But there's also increased Airbnb, short-term rentals on the road, which means people are walking and biking because they expect that on a quiet country road. But the worst thing that's happened for the safety of the road is that the Public Works Department paved it. And in paving it, they narrowed the road by at least three to four feet because they didn't have enough material to keep it at the same width. They took out the speed bumps. They left the speed bump signs, which was sort of absurd. And of course, they took out the potholes, which was probably a good thing. But by narrowing the road, they did not put any shoulder material in. In some places, the drop-off from the road is a good two feet. I've seen in the winter, cars have gone off the road, not been able to get back on the road because of the not being able to catch anything on the shoulder. There has been some shoulder mitigation of late, totally inefficient. It's being eroded already, and it was only put in a few places. So what can be done? First, I have my documentation when I bought my house of the easement requirements. The county has the right to widen the road. It could be widened back to its original width. It could even be widened further for a bike path for the increased pedestrian traffic. When I inquired with Joe Fernandez, he made it clear he thought that you could not widen the road. I do not believe that's accurate, according to the easement materials. At the very least, the shoulder has to be finished. It was spottily done and, like I say, eroding. At best, widen the road, well, the next step would be to widen the road to its original width. The next step would be to create thoughtfully some kind of additional two, three, four feet for pedestrian traffic, which is increasing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to come forward and please introduce yourself to the gang and let us know what's on your mind?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Steve Meyer, and I've lived in Taos County or own property in Taos County since 2004. I live behind Via Escondido. I've got two things to offer today. First of all, there's an event that's at the library this Saturday, and it's the Electric Vehicle Expo. So if you would come visit, you'd have an opportunity to look at all the latest electrical vehicles and other forms of electric mobility, bikes, go-karts, even Kit Carson's electric ATVs. They're a sponsor, Kit Carson is. Guzman Energy is a sponsor, my company, Energy Demand Solutions is a sponsor. So I hope everyone can make it. The other item I'd like to bring up is that there is an opportunity for Taos County to support disadvantaged and low-income homes through a program that has been funded by the state called the Community Energy Efficiency Development Block Grant. And this was approved by the state legislature in February of 2022. Now, it's been a long road, and it has to go through the Energy, Minerals, and Natural Resources Department for them to both write the rules, which were published in April of 2022, and allow a RFP to be issued, a request for proposal. The eligible entities that can go after this $10 million pot of money are counties, municipalities, tribal nations. This is a tremendous opportunity for Taos County to assist our low-income and disadvantaged citizens with energy efficiency in their home. And studies have shown that about 20% of all energy that's purchased for a resident is just wasted. And my belief is, through my experience running PNM's residential energy efficiency programs up until 2022, is that most low-income people cannot afford the simple improvements to their home, such as weather stripping, LED bulbs. This program, the Community Energy Efficiency Development Block Grant, can provide the resources and the material necessary to probably save 20%. So who wins? Well, first of all, the most disadvantaged people in our community win because they instantly get less electric bills. Their electric bills are lower. Their heating bills are lower because their houses are tighter. The air infiltration has been stopped. And ultimately, the climate wins. Because if you don't use the electricity or you don't use the gas, then there are no emissions from gas and electric that's never used. I have a resolution that I'd like to introduce later.
Thank you. Nicely done. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to make public comment? Okay, then, if you're listening or watching online, please dial in if you have a comment to 575-737-6310. And we'll give a minute or two for folks to call in. 575-737-6310. Go in one more time. 575-737-6310. All right, then I'm going to say we can safely move on. Agenda item number nine. And before we go there, just thank you to everyone who came up today to share your thoughts and your ideas and information with us. We appreciate it always. Item nine is approval of minutes, approval of the September 5th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Commissioners, what are your wishes? Any changes or?
Motion to approve?
Okay, we have, I'm going to give Miguel the motion and Vice Chair Romero the second. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherena?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brash?
Yes. Thank you, Val. And thank you to your team for the fine minutes from September 5th. That leads us into Agenda item 10, Resolutions and Ordinances. 10A is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-35, a Resolution Accepting the Donation of Lot 62, Unit 3, Located Within the Boundaries of Red River, Montevista Subdivision, from the Wheeler Peak Fire Protection District, Incorporated. And we have our Fire Marshal here with us this morning, Mr. James Hampton. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commission. So just to kind of give you a little background on this. So the Wheeler Peak Fire District has been attempting to build a station for the last 15-plus years. We were recently able to find a piece of land that actually met the criteria we needed, and they purchased that land through their nonprofit. So the reason for this resolution is so that they can warranty deed that land over to Taos County. And the reason for that is we cannot use any of our state fire funds to work or build on buildings that the county does not have control of the land. And so that's the reason for all of this. We actually got a grant last year to build a station for $400,000. And because this process had not been completed, we had to return that grant funding. We have again put in for that grant. We're very hopeful that it's going to go through. And we've talked to the Grant Council and borrowing something very odd, they understood the problem. And so I think we will probably be awarded that grant again. With that being said, I'll stand for any questions you guys have. But that's kind of the background on that. But that's kind of the background on that.
Thank you very much for that clear and concise background information. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
No questions. I'm sorry. Now that we have site control, then we can go forward, it seems, with these grants. So I make a motion to approve.
And I would love to second that. So Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Masparanias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brash?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Hampton, for being here, and congratulations on the donation. We wish you speedy further progress.
Thank you very much.
Okay, 10B is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-37, Which is a Resolution Authorizing and Directing Publication of the Title, A General Summary, and a Time, Date, and Meeting Place for Discussion, Consideration, and Action Upon Proposed Amendment of Ordinance 2018-3, Which is our Existing Open Burn Policy in Taos County. Mr. Hampton, our fire marshal. The floor remains yours.
So thank you again for letting me stand in front of you guys and present this. So we strive in our department to really continue to get better every time we get the opportunity. And one thing that we recognized with our existing open burn ordinance, there were some areas that were fairly vague and that we also, we didn't have the ability to adjust to situations as they arose, namely that in order for us to move into fire restrictions, we had to get a resolution from the Board of Commissioners before we could do that. And that can be sometimes a lengthy process and can delay moving into restrictions when we need to. The other thing we recognized is with our existing ordinance, the restrictions were on or off. There was no room for wiggle room. They were either fully on or fully off. And so what we proposed to do with this new ordinance is allow us to have levels of restrictions, similar to what the Forest Service and State Forestry do. Level one would be we stop issuing burn permits, which are a little higher risk than just people burning for recreation. The next level would be restricting burning unless certain criteria are met. And then the third level would be a full ban on all fires. One of the things we've seen in the past, and we actually saw it last year when State Forestry went into statewide closures and statewide burn bans, was the public didn't believe in those restrictions. They didn't believe they were appropriate at the time. And so by the time the restrictions were actually needed, the public was like, we're over this. We don't care anymore. And so we ran into noncompliance. And so with this, it allows us to move at a little gradual pace and allow us to meet the needs of the restrictions while also meeting the needs of the public. So those are the two big things we want to do with that. Any questions from you guys on that?
Thank you, James. I think we all probably appreciate you guys always striving to do better. And if we can help you be more flexible in meeting these needs, we trust you to do your job. You guys are the ones with the data and the science and the information out there. So just as a point of clarification, what we're doing this morning is, an ordinance needs a public period has a different process for being approved than a resolution. So what we're doing is the resolution to set the date to discuss and approve the ordinance with public notice for Tuesday, October 3, correct? At our 9:00 AM meeting. So just like you need to get the word out there about what's going on with restrictions, we need to get the word out there that this is going to be discussed, this ordinance adjustment at our Tuesday, October 3 meeting. Is that fair?
That is completely fair.
Any questions or comments then on this agenda item? Commissioners, Mr. Hampton?
Just a quick question. So that will be a public meeting then?
It's our regular meeting.
Regular, but a public meeting. The public will be able to get some input?
Yes.
Okay.
And since I have the year of the commission, one thing I forgot to mention was essentially, if this ordinance does pass, what it will be is it will be a delegation of authority from you guys to the county fire chief and to myself to be able to enact restrictions when necessary. I just wanted to make sure that we covered that before that question came up.
Yep. And I guess we trust you guys to do your job. So thank you for that clarification. Any further comments, questions?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-37.
Thank you, Commissioner Masparanias. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair. And also, just one question. Can we get a copy of the existing policy?
Yes, sir. I will send that to you this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Thank you, Vice Chair, for the second and the question. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Masparanias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brash?
Yes. Thank you. We'll see you in October. Question, question. Agenda item 11 is Contracts, Agreements, MOUs, and Bids. And the first one is 11A, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of a Non-Exclusive Franchise Agreement Between Taos County and Waste Management of New Mexico Incorporated. Award of a Non-Exclusive Franchise Agreement in the Public Interest and Welfare for the Purpose of Providing for Curbside and Commercial Accounts. And we have Mr. Harmio up with us again, and also Dan Darnell from Waste Management of New Mexico Public Sector. He's the Public Sector Manager. Welcome.
And this is Mr. Darnell. We asked him to come in person to answer any questions regarding this non-exclusive franchise agreement. Since we have three new members of the Board of County Commissioners, and then Dan will also be able to answer any other waste management-related questions. This franchise agreement is nothing new to Taos County. It's something that we always do every year. So it's nothing new. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Darnell.
Good morning, Mr. Darnell. Thank you for being here with us.
Yeah, good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Again, my name's Dan Darnell. I'm the Public Sector Manager for the state of New Mexico for Waste Management. I reside in Rio Rancho. As County Manager Harmio has just explained, and as you read in your agenda, I'm here this morning to seek your approval of a new non-exclusive franchise agreement for solid waste. We've been providing solid waste to the residents of Taos County for a number of years, and the current agreement expires at the end of the month. So we're kind of anxious to get this thing in place to kind of protect us all. So here are some specifics as to the agreement, but the terms are virtually identical to the existing contract. The term is a four-year through September 30 of '27. And then if both parties agree, it's bilateral. So if both parties agree, it can be extended for an additional four years through September 30 of 2031. The agreement specifies that Waste Management pays the county 8% on all collected revenues. So there's that franchise agreement to use your streets and rights of way and those types of things. And we have the county broken down into three areas. I think you're all familiar with those, but I just wanted to go over them just real quick. Area 1 is Arroyo Hondo, Arroyo Seco, Desmontes, El Prado, Las Colonias, Los Corovas, Yano Camaro, Pilar, Rancho de Taos, Talpa, and Valdez. And then Area 2 is the area around Angel Fire, Cerro, Costillo, Pano Mesa, Ojo Caliente, Peñasco, Cuesta, the area around Cuesta, Red River, Taoski Valley, and Trace Piedras. And then if the contractor has sufficient numbers of customers in some of the areas outside of that, we also include them in Area 3. So our scope of work will include furnishing all labor, equipment, materials, tools, insurance, supervision, all other items identical there to perform all the work necessary. Landfill fees will be paid by Waste Management. The rates charged to both residential and commercial customers will include those applicable disposal fees. And should the landfill increase their rates, then those rates would be passed on as well. To a point that was made by the young lady from Taoski Valley that was talking about hiring local, that's one of the things that we do throughout the term of the agreement. We'll continue to maintain a local office within Taos County and also hire local as much as absolutely possible. See, we maintain insurance coverage in $250,000 performance bond in this agreement. There is an automatic rate adjustment each year on the anniversary date of the agreement based on a particular CPI that's selected in the agreement. And then there's also a fuel adjustment. And that is also bilateral, so it's up or down. So if it comes down, then the rates come down. If it goes up, then it goes up. And I think that basically sums up the terms of our new agreement. But I'm respectfully requesting the commission to approve the agreement effective October 1.
Thank you, Mr. Darnell. Appreciate the information and appreciate you being here. Commissioners, any questions on this item? Commissioner Vehil?
Madam Chair, I don't have a specific question on this contract, but I do have a question in regards to the, last time you stood before us, there was an increase to all of Taos County that you serve. And I noticed on the bill it said Taos County. There was the reason for the increase. I was just wondering why you all chose to approach it that way because we did get phone calls in regards to what, why is Taos County increasing? Solid waste.
I got a considerable, thank you for that, Madam Chair, Commissioner. I got a considerable number of calls on that as well. And I knew that the card was going out, but I did not approve the language that was used. The only reference that was made was that the county regulates, through this agreement, the county regulates the charges, you know, the rates. And I think that's the reference that maybe was, that's the sentence that was, maybe needed a little work. And so what we put in place at this point is all of our haul-in sites throughout the state, from Hobbs to Farmington, they have been instructed that they're going to go through our communications team. And we have a wonderful communications team. And then everything will be approved by me before it goes out. So hopefully, we won't have those kinds of things moving forward.
Thank you.
I do apologize for any misunderstanding in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Darnell. And thank you, Commissioner Vehil, for the question. Any further questions for Mr. Darnell on this contract? Okay, then I would entertain a motion regarding the approval of a non-exclusive franchise agreement between Taos County and Waste Management of New Mexico. Award of a non-exclusive franchise agreement in the Public Interest and Welfare for the Purpose of Providing for Curbside and Commercial Accounts. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Masparanias. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Miguel. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Masparanias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brash?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Darnell. It's approved.
Madam Chair, if I could indulge the commission for just one more second. And this is totally unrelated, but we're one of the sponsors of the Albuquerque Balloon Fiesta. And I just wanted to invite you guys to come down. We're having a Fiesta tent celebration. It'll be on Friday, October 13, so Friday the 13th. I don't know how this is going to go, but hopefully, it's going to be a very entertaining evening. And you guys and your families, if you want to come down, we'd be more than happy to have you come and enjoy the festivities. So thank you.
Thank you for the invitation. Appreciate it. Okay, this takes us to Item 10B. Mr. Harmio, are you ready for 10B?
Yes. So before you is a contract for Blueberry Hill with GM emulsions. It's, we want to get approval so they can begin to mobilize next week. And they'll provide us a timeline for that work. So essentially, right now, it's an overlay project. We have some curbing on New Mexico 68. We are going to work with the contractor to see how far we could extend it with approximately $3 million that we have in grant funding and cash.
Okay, thank you very much, Brent. Commissioners, any questions about Contract TCC 2023-42 GM Emulsion for Blueberry Hill Road Improvements for Reconstruction of Blueberry Hill, Including but Not Limited to Removing and Replacing Existing Asphalt Pavement From the Junction of 64 South for Approximately .72 Miles? Any questions? Okay, seeing none, I will make a motion to approve Contract TCC 2023-42 with GM Emulsion for Blueberry Hill Road Improvements. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Masparanias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brash?
Yes. Thank you very much. Contract is approved. Item 11C is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of RFP 2023-02 For Substance Use and/or Alcohol Detoxification and Rehabilitation Services for Taos County. And with us this morning, we have Elsifi Hill, who I'm happy to say is our Chief Procurement Officer.
For the moment, still. Good morning, Chairwoman Brash, Commission. Before you, it's a staff recommendation for RFP 2023-02. I apologize for the delay of this presentation due to all the job duties I've been doing. This kind of fell to the side a little. Brought it back up. The Taos County Pursuit Department received one response to our published RFP 2023-02 For Substance Abuse and/or Alcohol Detoxification and Rehabilitation Services for Taos County Prior to the Deadline at 2:00 PM Mountain Standard Time, Friday, May 26, 2023. The offerer who responded was Rio Grande ATP. Based on review conducted for this RFP, Staff recommends toward RFP 2023-02 For Substance Abuse and/or Alcohol Detoxification and Rehabilitation Services for Taos County to Rio Grande ATP, Subject to Negotiations of a Mutual Agreeable Contract Respectfully. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you so much, Elsa, for bringing this back up. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Ms. Vehil on this RFP award?
It's excited.
It's exciting. Okay, if no questions and comments, we could entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehil.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Masparanias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brash?
Yes. Thank you very much. RFP 2023-02 For Substance Use and/or Alcohol Detoxification and Rehabilitation Services for Taos County to Rio Grande ATP is approved. This takes us to Item 11D, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement Between Taos County and the Taos Soil and Water Conservation District for Use of Pictometry Licensed Products as Authorized Under the Pictometry License. And we have Cory Strife with us from New Mexico Legal.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. So this is a fairly straightforward intergovernmental agreement. What it aims to do is, I believe, back in June or July, we had the Taos County assessor who contracted out with a service provider known as Eagleview. And what they do is they go out, they do flyovers with some pretty sophisticated cameras.[1672.33] cameras. And so that, that general contract was somewhere in the neighborhood of $750,000 for an eight-year period. And so what we're seeking to do is sort of subsidize out that cost with other interested parties who may benefit from access to that service. And so we've actually solicited five of them. Three of them have gotten on board, two of them we're waiting to hear back from. And so what this first one is, is with the Taos Soil and Water Conservation District. And what they'll do is, for the first year, they're going to pay a flat fee of $5,000 for access to the system so they can actually see all of the pictometry that Taos County has paid for, and that will enable them to conduct their research and do the things that they need to do without having to come in and burden our systems and our staff and our finances. And so that, this contract will return that $5,000 to the fund that paid for the eight-year period, and we hope to be back here every year with additional folks who are interested in getting these services.
Okay. Thank you, Cory, very much for presenting this and explaining it to us. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments about 11D? Motion to approve. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioner Vehil, for the motion and the second. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Muscatanias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Thank you very much, team. Our intergovernmental agreement between Taos County and the Taos Soil and Water Conservation District for Use of our Pictometry Licensed Products is approved. Thank you. 11E is very similar. Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Taos County and the El Prado Water and Sanitation District, also for use of our pictometry licensed products as authorized under our license. Cory, once again.
Thank you again. So yes, this is exactly the same contract, same agreement, different party. And so this is the El Prado Water and Sanitation District, and they are also paying a flat fee, $5,000. That'll just go right back into the same fund that paid for it.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, one real quick question. What is the benefit to a water sanitation district for to have this program?
To be totally honest, I don't exactly know. My understanding, though, is that this, this is a, it's kind of like an overhead view of all of Taos County, and actually, there's a 90-degree, or sorry, there's a 45-degree angle as well. And so a lot of, a lot of folks will use it for general mapping, for the ability to lay out districts, for the ability to see what is, what is and isn't there. But for example, the assessor uses it largely to view properties overhead and see the size of it. And so it's a really comprehensive program that has a multi-angle view of the entire county.
Thank you. And I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you for the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehil. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Muscatanias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Thank you very much. Our intergovernmental agreement between Taos County and the El Prado Water and Sanitation District for Use of Pictometry Licensed Products as Authorized under our agreement is approved. Thank you. So the last one here, 11F, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Taos County and Kit Carson Electric Cooperative, also for use of our pictometry licensed products as authorized under our license.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So exact same thing, party is just swapped out for Kit Carson Electric Cooperative, and same thing, same $5,000. And that will be, just so that you guys know for your benefit, there will be two more of these I'm going to bring to you next meeting, I guess, your next regular meeting, the town of Taos. And then I have one more additional party that I don't recall the name of, hopefully to bring to you as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions on this one? Thank you, Commissioner Vehil. I'll go ahead and second that. So we have a motion and a second regarding approval for the intergovernmental agreement between Taos County and Kit Carson Electric Cooperative for Use of our pictometry products as authorized. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Muscatanias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. So this agreement is also approved. Thank you, Cory.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 12 is our consent agenda. Commissioners, is there anything on here, items A, B, C, or D, that you would like to see pulled from the consent for questions or discussion? Seeing none, or hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through D, as presented to us on our agenda.
Second.
Move to approve. Did you, you made a motion, right, to approve?
Nope.
Then I will. Commissioner Vehil made the motion? I'll go ahead and second it. Madam Clerk, please call for the, call for the vote to approve our consent agenda.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Muscatanias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Okay, so items 12, A through D are approved. Thank you all. This takes us to item 13, our county managers' report and matters. 13A is update to the county commission on various items affecting Taos County. Mr. Harmio, our county manager, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, commissioners, for being here this day and for serving. First, I want to begin with the employee picnic, which is this Friday from beginning at noon, doing things a little bit different this year. This will be at Fredbacher Park. We've also partnered with Common Grounds. They're a youth-oriented group that is going to provide the food. There'll be three different choices of food. There'll be a frito pie, there'll be pork tacos, and there will be a hamburger and with a side of either coleslaw or potato salad and a drink. I may need a couple of you to add the lettuce and the tomato to the frito pies, but everybody will have their choice. The departments that are not able to participate, for example, like the detention center, they are actually in the training, so majority of them will be here. So we'll be preparing packaged meals that HR is working out, and Mr. Madrid and Mr. Silva will split up the delivery of those meals as well. Will be games again. And so please come by at Fredbacher Park at noon, and we encourage every county employee to, to come in as well for that. Looks to be a good time. It's been a busy summer. We're trying to get this a little bit earlier, but with the pay plan and some other items, that this is our first opportunity to as well. Chair Brush already kind of acknowledged the, our different departments that work, the Alvia Fire, but also the Sheriff's Office did a good job. Lieutenant Marvin Armijo was in charge for the weekend, and Sheriff made the faith to put him in charge, and they ran a pretty good ship on those three days of closing the roads, and they were really customer-friendly with residents as well. And then I'd also like to acknowledge Deputy Ted Flores. Deputy Flores was in the area when the fire broke out, so he saw the smoke and drove towards the fire. And so he's the one that called it into dispatch. So locally, he recognized the smoke and drove towards it, and we were able to jump on it. And then, I mean, we couldn't have done this about those first four hours with, with the volunteer fire departments going in there. And Chief Saad, being the incident commander, I mean, it was, it was his show until the Forest Service took it over and assigned an incident commander. And, and so I appreciate all the different area of fire departments, Pecuis Pueblo, Oaxaca, the different ones from Piñasco, and then Chief Cordova and Fire Marshal Hampton were probably on scene by a little after 1:00. So, but they left Chief Saad in, in charge and did a good job until the Forest Service took over. They, I can't say enough also about the volunteer fire department and their support group of their families. They get feed the firefighters that were out on the field. They prepared lunches. Myself and Commissioner Vehil and Mr. Madrid were able to eat a hamburger on, on Sunday. And also felt the communication was pretty good with Michael Lujan, who's the forest ranger for, for that district. And he kept us in communication, kept Commissioner Muscatanias in the loop as well. And, and then Fabia Montoya, who was the incident commander for the Forest Service, that did a good job as well in keeping us on the loop. And like I had mentioned, it was a little, the radios were going like crazy and dispatch as well when that, initially, the fire broke out. So I appreciate everything Dispatch did and for Roberto to jump on the console as well. I'm going to kind of keep it a little bit short today. There's also, we got notice yesterday. We received a Trails Plus Grant Award in the amount of $100,000. We do have some matching money. This is for planning design of approximately a four-mile walking trail on the property that we acquired. As you've heard me before, we wanted to construct a walking trail. This would give us the planning and design money to do that. And Ms., Ms. Stern took the lead on this project, and we worked with Talal on it, who's under contract for North Central Economic Development District. But like Jessica said yesterday, this was a team approach with Jason's experience. He had his input. We all had a little bit of input. And I think, I was going to say Jessica's batting a thousand right now, and she'll talk a little bit more. And I considered her the lead on this. I know Talal did some of the work, but for what she's been the lead on, she's batting a thousand right now with the grant, and she'll talk a little bit more. Before we turn it over to Jessica, is there any questions for me?
Thank, thank you, Brent. Commissioner Vehil, questions?
Yeah. When was that grant applied for? I'm excited to hear about it, but I didn't realize we had gone out for a grant.
Yeah, we applied for it about two weeks ago.
Oh, wow.
It was just.
Quick turnaround.
Yeah, it was a conversation in passing with Representative Ortiz, and she said, hey, there's this grant opportunity for the Trails Plus Grant. And so we took a look at it, and we, we applied for it.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I just have a comment in regards to the, the meeting that I attended for the fires. You know, it was pretty impressive how they coordinate as they send the firefighters out there. And so I just wanted to, you know, basically state that. I often, I don't think we realize what it entails and the coordination it takes to keep everyone safe, but it was pretty, pretty impressive, as well as the tour that we took. We got to see just a, a small portion that had burned, and it was safe for us to go up, so we were able to take a tour. And so I just, I know the community doesn't understand sometimes what it takes, and I just wanted to make sure and say that.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehil. And you reminded me that when we did touch on this at the top of the meeting, I failed to mention the Forest Service. I'd also like to acknowledge them, and Kit Carson Electric Cooperative, because you mentioned communication in this, and, and Luis Reyes did do a good job of talking about their plans. And Commissioner Muscatanias, like you were there, it's your, it's your home, it's your neighborhood, right? So thank you for your updates and the communication that you were part of those first few days of the fire. Appreciate all of you. Congrats on the grant. That's exciting. And I just want to encourage, I know a couple of us who were commissioners last year were at the employee picnic. Encourage all of us to show up, and I promise you don't really have to get dunked. You don't. So, but it's a ton of fun. So I hope that we're, we're all there. Did we, did we notice the potential quorum? Because I'm sure we're all going to be there.
I saw, Darnell.
Thank you.
Do that. And then also, there won't be no dunk tank.
Okay.
Just because we're afraid it might be too cold for it. So, you guys got lucky.
You just ruined my way.
Chris got lucky as well.
It was too cold last year. Okay, thank you, Brent.
All right, thank you.
So this takes us to item 13B, which is an update from our Economic Development Direct Department. Jessica Stern, our Economic Development Director, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. I am going to try to breeze through an update with a lot of information of what I've been working on for the last few months. And before I do that, I want to offer my gratitude for this position. It is truly a privilege to work with Taos County, so thank you for the opportunity to do this work. I'm going to talk about the work in two different sections. One is foundation building for an Office of Economic Development, and then talk about some programs and initiatives that I've been pursuing. I really believe that right now, we have an opportunity to build a true Office of Economic Development within Taos County. And what that means is a lot of really juicy organizational development work, which is work that I love. And so one of the things that I am interested in doing through the comprehensive planning process is creating a mission, a vision, a value proposition, and some guiding principles for this work. I would hope that that would be a very collaborative process, and could envision creating a short-term advisory committee to support that effort and ensure that the outcomes are rooted in our community values. So more to come on that, but that is something that I have in my sights. Another building block for working strategically is research and data. I need information and data to benchmark where we are in order to measure success. And I'm hoping to work with our planning office and our clerk's office to get information about business permits and licenses in order to break down information by industry, existing information by industry. And I've started conversations with Colin, excuse me, and will start to talk with planning and other partners in the, in other county departments to be part of creating an internal database that includes business profile information, which, which might be who our businesses are, contact information, how many people they employ, GRT information, all kinds of data, so that, again, I can create a baseline, as well as set goals for wage, wages, employment, business growth across sectors, and business development and support for economic development. For example, if I can get a ping in thinking about workflow, anytime someone applies for a business permit, then I can respond and work with that business person on the resource and support side of things. So creating some streamlined efforts across departments in order to support our business community. The Economic Recovery Corps is a new program in June that I applied for my second week on the job, which was fun. We submitted a proposal for a new fellowship program funded by the EDA and administered by the International Economic Development Council, the IEDC, that will place fully funded fellows in 65 communities for two and a half years. And out of 500-plus host community applications, Taos County is on the shortlist for now less than 100 counties. There are, there were 1,500 applicants for the 65 positions, and again, these are fully paid, full-time jobs. There were only three communities in New Mexico who applied, and all are in our region, Taos County, the Village of Cuesta, and the City of Raton. The IEDC has indicated to me that if a fellow should be placed in New Mexico, they would be hosted here at Taos County. And so I'm in communication with the Village of Cuesta and the City of Raton to understand how we can collaborate and share this resource, who would be embedded in the community for 30 months. The project for which we applied is to conduct an outdoor and cultural asset mapping study. This study would identify tangible assets, such as trails, venues, commercial real estate assets, and facilities related to the outdoor and creative industries, but also work in community to identify intangible assets. These are people, histories, languages, lifeways, and other assets that make our community unique. It asks the question, what are our cultural treasures, and who are our cultural treasures, and what are those stories? With that kind of information, not only can we share those stories, but we can document and create an archive for historic preservation, but also use the information to combat gentrification and create policy, funding, land use, and programmatic recommendations, and build economic development strategies that are values-aligned with our residents, rather than looking outside of ourselves for an economic silver bullet. We should know in October, November, if we will be able to be matched with a fellow, and that person would start here in January and February. It's a really exciting program. In addition to some other building blocks, I am interested in industry evaluation for job growth planning, and using additional research, such as census data, the American Community Survey, and other information that we can build a strategic plan for job growth in specific industry theaters, and then track that over the next three, five, and 10 years. And not finally, but not least, last but not least, the new website built that's taking place at Taos County. I'm very excited that economic development will have a presence online, which we don't currently have. And I'll be working on content for people interested in doing business in Taos County, including our residents. And this site might include connection to planning's business permitting process, information about the Chamber of Commerce and Main Street, as well as connection to the economic development and planning folks across the entire county. It would include the lodgers tax grant information, connection and information to New Mexico economic development, the Regional Development Corporation, North Central, and many partners. We really want to be a hub for economic development in the county. I'm also interested in including success stories about local businesses, because we want to celebrate what we have here. Okay, so I'm going to move on to some programs and initiatives. Mentioning the Taos County Lodgers Tax Grant Program, as you know, we reconvened the advisory board, and I want to give gratitude to Valerie and the clerk's office for holding that work for the past years. We are taking this opportunity to revisit the guidelines for applications for applicants and reviewers, and similar to developing a mission and vision for the broader Office of Economic Development, I'm interested in, we are working with the board to create a mission and vision and set up guiding principles for the grant program itself. And I believe that we will be able to present a draft of those writings and those guidelines to you before the end of the year. I built a simple online application for the interim time until we have a more finalized and revised application, and hope to offer informational and training sessions to the community once our guidelines are complete, so that people can learn about the grant program and how to apply. And we have granted $146,547 in three months since the program came back online. Business retention and expansion, BRE. I am working right now to build a paid internship opportunity, supported by local partners, that would help me build out a BRE program. And this person who I would supervise would develop a need, needs- And this person who I would supervise would develop a needs assessments that are industry-specific, yet also comprehensive enough to identify a broad range of resources and solutions that would benefit our community. I hope to work in partnership with the Taos County Chamber of Commerce, as ideally the Chamber would provide programming and services after we identify what those needs are. The intern would help me create a SWAC or a SWAT analysis, evaluation metrics, business visitation protocols, an early warning system for at-risk businesses, and communication strategies about how businesses can participate in this program. And my hope is to have this intern hired and working starting this fall or winter, and it would likely be about a 12- to 16-week internship. And relationship building and network facilitation, I have had more coffee in the last three months, four months than my entire life, but it has been a true joy to build relationships with partners across the county, which feels like a really important part of this work. And we did convene our first Taos County Economic Development Summit last Thursday on September 14th. We had 60 attendees, people who are in leadership positions all across the incorporated municipalities and across the county, and people who represented community organizations, regional service providers, state and federal partners. And our purpose was to surface challenges, opportunities, capacity needs, and areas of abundance as we look to develop a collective vision for economic development. I have a huge stack of notes to go through, but I've received positive feedback about that event. Thank you, Commissioner Beal and Commissioner Brush for attending. Appreciated your presence. I think it was a success, because people want to meet quarterly, which is making me sweat a little bit, but it's good, good feedback. And this, this information, I think, will feed into our comprehensive planning process. So more to come on that. In thinking specifically about arts, culture, and creative economy, we applied for an inaugural New Mexico Economic Development Creative Industries Grant, and our proposal was to provide creative and artist entrepreneur training workshops between January and June of 2024, as well as paid work-integrated learning opportunities for, at arts and culture organizations for our youth. And we should know by the end of the month. I was hoping to have good news today, but they haven't made those decisions yet. There are a number of other ideas I have about supporting the creative economy, but I think that when we get our BRE program up and running, as in addition to looking at every industry, I'm very curious to see what the needs are. And then talking about film specifically, I have been in the beginning stages of exploring what a film program could look like here in Taos County, and perhaps in collaboration with the region. I want to give credit to Karina Armijo, who did a lot of this groundwork while she was at the town of Taos. She really laid an incredible foundation. And I do believe that there is an opportunity for economic equity through film by, through monetization of land that is privately owned. And what I mean by that is that includes connecting with landowners, private landowners, with site selection team at New Mexico Film to photograph their property, add them to the New Mexico Film website, and provide capacity support for how they can charge productions and earn somewhat passive income off of their private land. So this feels really exciting, I think, for folks who have land and have had land for generations, but may not be able to support having that land. I know that Brent has talked about this, but we, I are looking for the infrastructure for storage and an indoor soundstage facility, and eventually will look at a county permitting process for film production. That will require a level of customer service that I'm not quite ready for yet, but I'm looking forward to the future. And then general economic development and business support. I've been really enjoying building a relationship with New Mexico Economic Development. I've been supporting LIDA and J-TIP applications, and attending J-TIP meetings in support of local businesses. And the bread and butter of this job has been consulting with local business owners, listening to their needs and pain points, and connecting them with resources. And that has been truly wonderful. So there's a lot of information, and I hope I did it in 10 minutes, Brent. I tried. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. Just two words: keep caffeinating. Perhaps we open a tab at her favorite local coffee shop.
That would be great.
Commissioners, questions or comments for our Economic Development Director?
Yeah, I have one question. You mentioned distribution of Lodger's Tax funds. Are you working on a plan on how these funds could be distributed in the future, especially related to a possible history museum and historic Taos County Plaza, or any activity on Plaza?
So there's, yes, and. There are two branches of the Lodger's Tax Fund. One is the promotional side, which is, you know, has the Advisory Board making recommendations to you all, and local organizations apply for that, and then we come forward with those recommendations. And then there's the non-promotional side, hi, which I am still getting my feet under to understand how we at the county make decisions about supporting tourist attractions and facilities, and that could be something such as a history museum. But I think Brent wants to say something about that.
Jessica has met with the Taos County Historic Society on that very issue, so I wasn't sure if you were going to work that in, but she did meet with them to further answer your question.
Yeah, and thank you for reminding me that I did have that meeting. And I am actually meeting with Paul on Thursday to talk more about what that could look like. And I've encouraged the Historical Society to begin working on an operations plan for that space, because in order to create a working history museum and activate that space, they will need some kind of business plan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Commissioner Beal.
The un-promotional side, there's certainly some opportunity for the Commissioners, the county, to possibly put some of that money into the parks or other, other ideas. I'm sure we all have ideas. I just want to make sure that when that conversation's happening, that we're all at the tables, because there's a lot of input that the public is sharing with us.
Absolutely, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessica. A couple of things I really appreciated is the idea of streamlining and connecting the dots between our departments, planning, clerks, everybody. That seems like there's a lot of untapped potential there that we could, we could tap into, or you could tap into, to help our, our business owners, our small businesses in Taos. So that's awesome. And also the, the fellowship program and the internship program, like, you know, bringing in especially our young people to, to help us with the research, with the data, with the work, but also to like, help them understand what's going on with Taos County, what's going on with economic development. Really appreciate those efforts. Any other comments or questions for Jessica? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. It was a great event last week.
Thank you. Thank you for being there. Appreciate it.
Okay, this takes us on to Agenda Item 14, Commissioners Reports and Matters. 14A is new business to be considered at a future commission meeting. Commissioners, okay, then let's move to 14B, Commissioners' Announcements. I'll offer up the first one to start. We were all at the September 5th Community Schools Model Meeting here in our chambers, and I want to thank everybody for being there, and just note that the next meeting, we had said in about a month, there would be a follow-up. The next meeting, so mark your calendars till the invite goes out, is October 11th, which I believe is a Wednesday, at 3:30, and this will happen in Cuesta. So we look forward to continuing the conversation, diving in to some of the points that were raised that afternoon, and making sure all of the partners, all of the participants in that meeting come away with something for them, whether they're well down the path of instituting that model, or continuing to learn about what the Community School model is. So that's my announcement. Commissioners, any further announcements? No further announcements? Okay, okay. Then 14C is our Board and Committee Reports. So our report's out from any boards or committees that we've, we've attended since our last meeting, and the first one on the agenda is New Mexico County's. Commissioner Beal sits on the Board of Directors.
Yes, thank you. So I attended the Board of Directors meeting back in August 4th, 2023. This was in Carlsbad. I did mention that I would come back with some details on that. So I'm going to go ahead and just briefly, there is actually quite a bit of information. If you're wanting to take some time to read, I will share that with you. But in brief, the New Mexico Board of Directors select 2024 legislative priorities. That was one of our main goals, was to come up with a list of what our folks will be at the Roundhouse supporting and talking about. The first one is HB2 appropriations. It's in regards to detention reimbursement fund, detention recruitment and retention, prisoner transport and extradition, RICE funding, courthouse funding, emergency medical services, state health benefits plan. So there's quite a bit grouped into that, but this is something they've been working on, so they're going to continue those efforts. And next is the firefighter recruitment and retention. And so that, that was a big conversation. As we all know, volunteers are hard, only because the individuals have to hold jobs. So they're trying to make this a permanent, you know, positions in which they can fund. The other action that the Board took was some changes in regards to New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority, quite a bit of amendments to the Affordable Housing document. And once again, if you want to read that, please let me know. I've got that in full. The second was, action was approved contributing 1% of, two years of the PILT money to the NACO Public Lands Resource Center, with each county commission approving individually. Now, you all know how this works, it's consensus, and there was consensus to put 1% or to at least have those conversations within commissions to approve 1% of that, that funding. We, we go back and forth every year to protect our PILT money, which is payment in lieu of taxes. And so what they're really trying to do is make this a permanent fund, so that we're not always wondering whether we're, we're going to receive it or not. So the conversation was in regards to, do we just put some money towards it, have a team go in, and really try to make this happen once and for all? Since I can remember, my 30-some years, we've been, we never really know whether we're going to get it or not. And so often, we're up in Washington, you know, having those conversations. So we want to see if we can just finalize that once and for all. So that will come probably forward. I do want to talk to Brent and see what that looks like in regards to it coming before the commission for a vote. And money-wise, what does that mean? The next was approved, we approved the fire and emergency bylaw amendments, and the fourth was ratified the appointment of Santa Fe County Sheriff Don Mendoza at an NMC, I'm sorry, the NMC treasurer. So those were the main highlights. I also went in, since I'm a new board member, there was some orientation, and, and certainly I happened, we happened to be there when they did have a, some arrests that were taking place, which was really interesting, because they apparently had the sheriff's office doing some work there, and they actually brought in a lot of individuals that were, I guess the sheriff was really busy bringing in those illegal, or those people that were, they were out arresting. So it was just a lot of commotion. That didn't happen in there, but our sheriff had to leave. He is the president, the chair of the, of the New Mexico Association, so he had to leave and take care of business, but it was really interesting, all that was taking place while we were there. Final, I am attending the next meeting, which is November, I'm sorry, this next Thursday, the 28th and 29th, so Thursday and Friday, and I'll be in Socorro, so another board meeting, and I will bring back whatever comes out of that. Is there any questions, Commissioners?
Thank you, Commissioner Beal. Appreciate your service on that board, definitely. Any questions for Commissioner Beal? Okay. Then 14C, the second item, is the meeting update from the Rio Fernando de Taos Revitalization Collaborative. I attended that meeting last week, and just to keep it really brief, there was discussion on the progress of their Watersmart grant, which is a grant that the collaborative shares across interested and/or partner groups who are interested in the revitalization of the river that's right over there. I think a lot of people don't know that there's a river running right through town. That grant includes sponsoring some public events, so the river cleanups that happen. And the next one is on October 14th. It'll take place over by the Taos Land Trust. The river cleanup section will be over there that time. That is, I think, it's Saturdays, right after Friday the 13th, which came up earlier, from 9:00 AM to 1:00, and they always provide lunch. So in July, we worked on this segment of the river, and now we'll work on, on that one. And interesting to hear about the Trails Plus Grant. They might be, the collaborative might be a good, a good partner to collaborate with as we plan out, because Taos County, that project will, you know, be along the largest bank of the Rio Fernando within town before you get pretty far out. So it might be interesting to consult with them and let them know that, of what we might plan, hear what they have to say.
Right. We most definitely need to meet with the collaborative, because we need another set of monies to do riverbank stabilization and clean that up, too. So we are going to have to partner with them and look for another set of monies, because if the trails, we always need construction money, that'll be up top, but I also want to clean that section of the bank, and, and if we can make it some kind of interpretive, a sec, interpretive area as well. I know it's a river, not technically in the sec yet, but there's folks that do water off of the Rio Fernando that we could have some kind of interpretive collaboration with river stewardships or something.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you. And just a quick point of collaboration, usually this agenda point is for us to report back on the committees or boards that we've all, like, voted ourselves, like, you know, been appointed to. The collaborative is open to Taos County. I go when I can, I meet every other month, and I know, Commissioner Beal, you've, you've attended before, but if, if the rest of you guys are interested in attending one of their meetings, they're typically on Wednesdays, like, late morning, sometimes with lunch. So just let me know, and you're more than welcome. It's not, it's not that we've been officially appointed to that, it's just that we've chosen to participate.
Madam Chair, this is not a report, but a question. Is there an update on the status of the RFP that the town of Taos is pursuing for winter travel for Taos Air? Is there anything new on that?
Not that, no, not aware of it, no. I'm not sure that's gone out, but no, I don't think any, you don't have any information? Okay, I don't think any of us has, you know, any updates.
They've not come forward, so, again, so.
Okay, then that takes us to item 15 on our agenda. Taos County Board of Commissioners may convene in closed session. 15A is discussion regarding potential purchase of property. This matter may also be discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act exemption 10-15-1H8, which allows for discussion of the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights by the public body. So we will add to 10:28, be...
Need a motion.
Yes, thank you. Is there a motion to at 10:28 AM? Thank you, Cory. To go into executive session?
Motion to go into...
Thank you, Commissioner Beal. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote to go into executive session.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush? Yes, thank you very much. We will be resuming our public meeting in estimate 45 minutes or so. So if you're watching online, please feel free to come back in a little bit. Thank you. Okay, everybody, could I entertain a motion for the Taos County Board of County Commissioners to come back into regular session today on Tuesday, September 19th, 2023?
Motion.
Thank you, Miguel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascaranias. Madam Clerk, please call the vote to come back into executive session at 11:31 AM.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, thank you very much. We are now back in our open session, and I'm going to look to our attorney, Cory Strife, to provide a report out from our closed session, our executive session.
Yes, thank you. And so the, the closed session, no other matters were discussed in the closed meeting, except for those that were limited specifically to those specified in the motion for closure and in the notice for the separate closed meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cory. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, a motion to approve the attorney's report out of executive session?
Thank you, and I'll go ahead and second that. Madam Clerk, please call the vote to accept our attorney's report of our closed session.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascaranias?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved our attorney's report. Only remaining item on our agenda today is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
We are now, this regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of Taos County, New Mexico, is adjourned at 11:32 AM on Tuesday, September 19th, 2023. Thank you, everybody.